Hi, this is Cindy Cochrane. Welcome to the archives of the Cindy Cochrane Show. Remember, I'm live Monday through Friday, 10:00 AM to 11:00, right here on IRLoneStar.com. You can be a part of the show by calling 936-647-3776. Also, please visit my Facebook page, The Cindy Cochrane Show. And let me say a special thanks to our show sponsors, BK Myers Photography. If you would like to be a sponsor of The Cindy Cochrane Show, contact me at Cindy@IRLoneStar.com. Enjoy. Good morning, everybody. You're listening to The Cindy Cochrane Show? Yes, you are. It's Friday! I'm so excited, it's Friday. Finally. I thought this week would never end, but this is, uh, but it's okay. Every day that your name's not in the obituary, you're breathing out regularly, everything's cool. I think it's a good day. So, uh, that's how I'm gonna look at it. And it's gorgeous here. Oh, you know, I know you guys that are listening in the UK and those guys that are listening in San Francisco, well, it's probably pretty there too, all the time. But anyway, some of the places that you're listening, I hope it's pretty as it is here in Montgomery County. I mean, it is gorgeous. We are in downtown Conroe. The beautiful, just, ah, looks like you're, you stepped back into an era that's just, you know, reminiscent of its, its home, its family, and, uh, it's very quaint. And that's what it's like downtown Conroe, so you guys haven't visited here lately. Come on down, it's fine. And you can look through the big pane glass windows and watch us, uh, perform this show with all of its depth and, um, and clarity of what's going on today. And, uh, speaking of what's going on today, I, I gotta say this, that the, uh, that the debate happened last night, and you know what I did? I skipped the debate. I just trumped it. I said, "I'm not gonna listen to the debate, I'm gonna listen to just the highlights," just like I do a lot of football games. I, I, I can't stand, I don't have the patience to sit and watch football. So, I go to the highlights, or I'll click in, I'll see what's going on and where they are. Did I say click in? That's such, no. I, yes, it's like an old term, like I'm gonna stand up and have to turn the, turn the channel. But, um, anyway, it, it, it just, I thought, you know what? I feel like they're probably gonna go over the same stuff I've, I've listened to in the other debates, so I thought, "I'll just wait and see, um, if anything exciting happens." And I watched the little highlights of Donald Trump's, uh, things to the, the vets. I, you know, some veterans organizations were saying, "We're not associated, we're not gonna be a political pawn and all his stuff, we're not gonna do..." What? I don't get that. You know, whatever the guy's gonna offer, take the money. Take the money and run, and don't say, "Oh, he's not gonna pander us." Be pandered to. The vets need that, they need the, uh, awareness, they need people, uh, saying, "Yeah, this, this is the way to do it." And I don't care what the, you know, the reason for it, as long as those veterans are, uh, properly, uh, you know, talked about and given the kudos they need to give, and then the money that they need. That is fine, whoever gives it, I don't care. But, uh, it was, it was very interesting, and the drama of that, we haven't seen the poll numbers yet today, to see if that's affected anybody, but, uh, I mean, this is like, right around the corner, just a couple of days left, and, and they're gonna be voting. So, it's, it's a fun, it's a fun thing to watch. I've just never enjoyed watching politics as much as I have through this event, and I think Donald Trump has helped bring all that together, and no matter what you think about him, I think it's been really fun. Now, this morning, I, you know I love to talk politics, you know that out there. And I have someone here that, uh, is running for city council, position one, not district one, but position one. And, uh, and so, Richard, don't roll your eyes, I got it right. Finally. Yesterday, I said he was running for Texas state representative. I'm sorry, but Google, Google lied to me. I never thought Google would lie to me, or, you know, I didn't check a date. You know, it's like expiration date on your milk, you gotta check the same thing on Google, because you never know what you're reading is current or not. So, I learned my lesson, and now I'll just call the person and check, and check directly with them. I have, in the studio today, live, looking so dapper, Dwayne Ham. Dwayne Ham, welcome. You know, and, and if we'd have played the canned applause music, it would've been better. But anyway, I'm so happy, I'm applauding inside, uh, that you're here and that you like to talk politics. And you're running for city council, and I am so happy, because I'm gonna, I wanna find out all the behind the scenes. Now, have you ever sat on the city council before?
I haven't, I haven't. And I wanna tell y'all, thank y'all again for having me here at Lone Star Radio.
Oh, man.
It's awesome. I'm very excited to be back again.
And, and you've already brought me, uh, on the sidewalk.
I did.
Dwayne's out there hawking for, to have, you know, talent come into the show, and so he, uh, he found Rick's...
Rick Sousley.
Rick Sousley out there, and, uh, Rick is really excited about supporting you and being a part of your...
Man, what a, what, that guy can sing now. If you, if, if, if people haven't heard him sing, they need to listen to him sing. He's been around Conroe about 25 years, really sings some great songs.
Well, we've got his CDs now, and we've got, and he's gonna bring by his, all his information, and we're gonna have him on the show. 'Cause, you know, you, I know you pointed, you said, "Do y'all have music on your show?" "Yes, yes, every Wednesday, we have, uh, country music." And, uh, I just learned to say "country music" instead of "country western music," they corrected me there. I don't know, there's so many, you know, things that I thought were right, now I'm finding out they're wrong, I gotta relearn. But it's okay, I'm an old dog, but I can learn new tricks, it's okay. It doesn't matter.
Well, like, I got to, I, I had a chance, opportunity to go to his fundraiser, uh, about a week ago. Rick has been diagnosed with cancer now.
That's what he said.
And, and, and what a shame, but, such a great guy, but, I mean, he, he is in such good spirits, everything's going well for him. Uh, I, I think that the surgery was successful and, and things, and I think he's fixing to go through some chemo and stuff like that.
Right.
I mean, this guy's been such an inspiration, has given back so much to Montgomery County. It's funny, you know, we had Jammin' for Jay a week ago, over here at the Creighton Theater, and, uh, you know, Rick and I were just talking about it outside, and when, when Jay had his accident...
Now, this is Jay?
Jay Ross Martin.
Jay Ross, yeah.
Um, I'm sorry, I just kinda, I thought everybody knew him, and, yeah, I have to remember I'm on the radio, but Jay Ross Martin, uh, Rick Sousley played one of his benefits, uh, way back in the day. So, he's been around a long time and, and has given so much back to the community. So, it was nice to see so many people that came out and supported him...
Right.
...in his time of need.
Right. Oh, yeah, well, we're excited about having him on. I'm gonna, uh, contact Michael Player, who a lot of times, uh, grabs the talent and brings them in on, on Wednesday, and talk to him about, uh, let's have Rick on, and it'll be, that'll be fun. And he's got a lot of history, lots of history that he can talk about.
Man, does he ever.
Yeah, I love, I love all that, too, so it'll, it'll be fun. He looks like the age that, that I might not have to explain things that I say to him. You know, I love that, I love that about people, I can say, "You remember?", and they go, "What?". So, uh, anyway, that'll be fun. But you are so sweet to be promoting somebody else, that's good character, Dwayne.
Well, thank you.
See, and wasn't even, you know, so, I didn't ask you, you just, you just, there's your heart, and that's good to know. So, you're running for city council?
I am.
And, uh, you know, what we wanna get into today is all the, you know, like, and you've run for other offices, so this isn't your first rodeo, right?
No, I, I originally, uh, I started off running, uh, for, uh, well, I was in the JP race for a little bit, and then, uh, Senator Brandon Creighton, which was, at the time, was our state representative for District 16, decided he was gonna run for ag commissioner. Uh, and so I got out of the JP race, Precinct One JP race, and started running for state representative, uh, and, and I lost.
Oh.
I sure did.
Well, there, we can talk about the feeling of, of losing something like that, and what it does to you, and it doesn't, it doesn't stop you at all.
Oh, man, I got, I have to tell you, the Lord's blessed me in so many ways, and I learned so much from that race.
Sure.
And, uh, you know, what, what got me into politics is I got tired of Monday morning quarterbacking from my easy chair, just screaming at the TV about what our politicians in Washington were doing.
Well, that's what I do here, yeah.
You know, and, and seeing what was going on locally. I mean, we're in such, we live kinda in a bubble here in Montgomery County.
Amen, brother.
So many things are great here.
Right.
And once you just, like, once you cross that county line, it just goes south in a hurry. So, it just got me involved, um, and, and I learned so much in my state representative race. I'd say I lost, but I, I'm probably, I'm very heavily involved in politics today.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not elected to anything, uh, and so I saw some real need, and so I just continued on. You know, we started the Texas Conservative Tea Party Coalition, you know, the ones that people down south like to call fake. You know, I love that part. You know, they put it in the paper yesterday, "Well, we own it." You know, "We're not fake," and, and I don't know who, who decides the moral interpretate of who's conservative and who's not, but, uh...
And now you're the chair of that, right?
I'm the chair of that, and, uh, and we've stayed, we've stayed heavily involved there. I go to Austin quite a bit, uh, you know, working on different legislation that'd be good for Montgomery County, and good for the state of Texas.
Good for you.
And, uh, a good friend of mine, uh, just kept talking to me about the city, you know, I, I was looking at other things, and he said, "Man, I really, really need your help, and, uh, I need some help on city council." And so, I thought about it, and I finally told him, I said, "Man, I think you're right. I think what, the things that we're wanting to accomplish, and, and myself, can be done at city council, and, and take care of the good people of, of Conroe."
That's, that's terrific, 'cause that's what I wanted to find out, you know, like, city council, is that the first line of defense there? Uh, 'cause you're right there, ground, you're, you know, boots on the ground at that point, and then till you go to Austin, and you're kind of away from the situation, but you're here, involved and all mixed up.
Well, make no mistake, the people in Austin, our, our state representatives and our ci, and our senators are fighting for Montgomery County, there's no doubt, and I don't wanna take anything from them. We have a great, great bunch of, of state representatives, Representative Cecil Bell, Mark Keough, Will Metcalf, uh, great, great guys, and doing a great job for us. And then we have Senator Brandon Creighton, and Senator Robert Nichols, uh, from here, so, uh...
Well, that's, I mean, that's, that's good endorsement from you. Uh, Will Metcalf, when he first started to run, came on the show when I was doing the Mark and Cindy Show, and he, uh, he came on, and, so we, uh, we questioned him pretty good, you know, like, Mark, Mark was a real, he's a real Democrat, and I'm Republican, so it was funny, you know, like, he didn't know what he was gonna be asked.
Mark who?
Uh, Mark Hader. Sorry, see, I thought everybody knew.
Okay. I'm like, Democrat, Montgomery County?
Oh, believe me, he tries to...
I thought I knew them all.
Seven.
There's two. Oh, there's, oh, I just, there's seven.
They do keep it quiet, they do, they do. I think, you know, like I told you, I think they have to, you know, draw a donkey in the sand for each other to be able to talk to each other, like, "Are you okay? Can we talk? Okay." And, uh, and that's how they communicate. But, uh, no, but he, well, Will came on, and, uh, I didn't know what kinda questions he thought we were gonna ask, you know, but I, you know, started off with, 'cause I think he was like, ready, okay. And he has all his papers and all his stuff there, and he goes, "So, uh, so Will, you know, we, we need to talk to you, we need to ask you some questions and all that, so what's it like, what's it feel like to drive down a street that's named after you?" And he goes, "Uh, it's pretty cool." And I was, okay. And, no, so, and we went, uh, down from there, but we did talk, um, a lot about his, his passion, and what he wanted to accomplish, and, and all that, and then he won, and we, I saw him at, uh, Red Brick, and I said, "Didn't I tell you, you come on the show, and you won, so you owe us, you need to come back." We haven't been able to get him back, I think he's afraid. Now, it's only me, he has to talk to just me. So, uh, we go, but I do wanna get him back. I, I love talking to you guys about what it, what it is that you, um, how are you gonna stay in touch with people? What's the most asked question that you get from people? And so, we're gonna talk about that with Dwayne Ham, who's running for city council, position one, right here in Conroe, Texas. So, we'll be right back with him, and you know what kinda questions I love to ask. He's scared, he's scared, look at him, he's scared. No, we'll be right back on The Cindy Cochrane Show.
The Cindy Cochrane Show, the most opinionated talk show on radio.
Are you interested in learning more about preparing quick, healthy, and safe meals for your family? Would you like to spend time with others learning tips and tricks, along with practicing and tasting nutritious food? If so, the On the Road to Healthy Living Mobile Cooking School is for you. Call Amy Rustler at Texas A&amp;M Agrolife Extension Service at 936-539-7825 to find a class near you, or volunteer to host a class.
Hi, folks, it's your old buddy Luke Clayton, and I wanna invite you to join me every Saturday morning, right here on Lone Star Internet Radio, from 8:00 to 9:00, or outdoors with Luke Clayton and friends. Bill Dance is a frequent guest, Larry Weissee, Mr. Whitetail is on the show every week. We talk a lot of hunting and fishing, and generally have a good time. So, remember, every Saturday morning, 8:00 to 9:00, right here on Lone Star Internet Radio.
In a world where everyone with a smartphone is a photographer, unique images still stand out in local newspapers, magazines, and on the internet, writer and photographer Brad Meyer has gained a reputation for innovation and quality, specializing in an editorial approach to portraits and event photography. For information, visit BKMYER.com, or call 281-221-4812.
SPCA Pet Snap of Montgomery County is a 501(c)(3) all-volunteer-based rescue and adoption organization with a no-kill policy for healthy and adoptable animals. Our goals are fourfold: to rescue and rehabilitate homeless animals, to provide a safe haven for the animals until a suitable adoption or foster care home is found, or until they are reunited with their owner, to educate the public about the great need to reduce pet population, which includes the importance of having their pets spayed and neutered, and to further the cause for humane and responsible pet ownership, and to provide a low-cost spay-neuter clinic for people who are unable to afford to spay or neuter their pets otherwise. SPCA Pet Snap of Montgomery County encourages you to think adoption first. You can contact us at www.spcaofmc.com.
The Cindy Cochrane Show, even if these walls could talk, they couldn't get a word in edgewise.
And we're back on The Cindy Cochrane Show. It is Friday! Oh, so exciting, so much stuff we're gonna be doing this weekend, so it's gonna be, it's gonna be fun. I hope you've, uh, got something planned, just get out and walk around, 'cause it's so gorgeous outside. Uh, my special guest today, of course, is Dwayne Ham, and he's now talking down to me. He's gonna be talking down to me. You're, he's standing up at the table, "You're tall, you're a tall guy." Dwayne is very good-looking, he's very dapper, you know, he's got a suit on. You dressed up for the show, it's, you know, casual Friday, you could've worn your MTV shirt or anything like that.
Hey, I did it just for you.
Oh, then you're so sweet, and, and suave, is this guy suave, or what? Um, now, listen, I, you know, you have got to appeal to, you know, a vast variety of people, and so, in doing that, whenever you start, um, talking to the public, now, you just filed for this, so you're...
I did.
Yeah, and so you're gonna be out now, out and about talking to people. Do you go to groups, is that what you do? Just...
Sure, well, I mean, we, you're, when you're running, you talk to everybody, anybody that'll listen, you, you wanna talk to them.
Sure.
So, yes, I was, uh, I was at a forum last night for Lake Conroe Rep-, I'm sorry, uh, North Shore Republican Women.
Oh, those are good women.
Oh, man.
Good women.
Aren't they? Both, both groups are, I mean, all the, all the Republican Women groups here are awesome.
They, yeah.
So, I, I have a, I have a love for all of them.
Yes, that's...
But, last night's was North Shore Republican Women, and so...
Right.
Uh, I talked to a few people there while I was there. You just, you get the word out, and you start building your campaign, and, uh, hopefully the people will like my conservative values and my common sense that I think I'll bring to the, to the table, to the city council. You know, it's an at-large position, so position one...
Right.
Anybody in the city limits can vote for me.
Okay, and they, and they need to do that, because I sat and listened to some forum or something, I, I, it was, uh, it's on YouTube.
Mm-hmm.
And, and this was done five years ago, let me know. Uh, it's, it was on YouTube, and you're sitting there, and I see you, and I see some people that are kind of around you, but they're asking you questions, they're all, and they're, uh, one sounded like a reporter from a paper or something, and then there are other people. And, uh, it was interesting, everybody was typing, everybody was on the computer, everybody was writing things down, and I thought they were very rude, they didn't look up at you and, and, and listen to you as you talked, they just would ask questions, and they were like, writing everything you said down, but it was, uh, it was, it was, you know, they really asked a lot of questions, and you sat there for a long time and answered, and you had like, two minutes for each?
Oh, yeah.
Answered, you know what that was?
I know exactly what, oh, I know exactly, I, I know exactly which group you're talking about. I'd rather not give them any name ID on the air.
Okay. Well, you were answering all the questions, you know, that they ask, and, and I, so I was just wondering, is that the kinda stuff that you go through, you know, you have to do every day, you have to answer the same questions, you have to, and act like it's the first time you answered it, or that, you know, this is a, you're really passionate about it?
You bet.
But you're asked these questions over and over and over again. How do you do it? How do you...
Well, you just, you dig in, and a lot of it comes from your heart and what you know, and, and your passions, and so, uh, I don't mind answering the questions, as, as long as, you know, I don't think any candidate does, and like I told you before, you know, after I came out of that state rep race, we started doing some other things in politics, and, and one thing that's important is that you don't have the gotcha questions. You know, you can get anybody, if you really wanna just tear somebody down, you can get them. If you really wanna know what they're really thinking, and, and, and what their passions are, and where their heart is, then, then, then do that. Figure it out. But, you know, uh, have some dignity about it when you do it, so...
Well, I, you know, I, I think that because your background is like, like business, right? You're an entrepreneur, and you do a lot of business, uh, so you'll have a, you'll have an understanding and a connection to the small business owners and things that they're going through, and things that the, the county, you know, the county may put on them, and you're fighting for them to be able to...
You bet.
...to keep their business going and all. So, um, if, if you, if you champion one cause, what is the one cause that comes to your mind, like, top priority?
Well, I mean, we, I, you know, right now, I think Montgomery County has, has, has a huge water issue, uh, so they say, "We have a huge water issue," and, and right now, one of my champions is making sure that our people that, that are on fixed incomes...
Right.
...and, and just barely getting by, aren't gonna just get taxed out of their homes, be able to pay their electric bills, be able to pay their water bills. Now, we don't have anything to do with the electric bills in the city, but, but we do have something to do with their water bills. And, and, and I'll tell you what, I, I talk to people every day that are having some huge issues with, with how their water bills are coming down. We, we, you know, the city of Conroe signed a deal with the San Jacinto River Authority, and, uh, there's, there's another tax on there now, and it, it's, it's pretty big, so...
What?
Yeah.
And so, you're gonna...
I've got some real concerns about, about the default rate that we're gonna have, because good people on fixed incomes aren't gonna be able to pay those high water bills.
No, I love that, I love that you are for the senior citizens. I fall in that range so well right now, and, uh, I, I love that you have that kind of, you know, interest to make sure that they're able to stay in their homes, and you're seeing people that are taxed out of their homes. How can you fight a tax like that, that Conroe, I mean, that they've already agreed to, and they've already signed the contract with...
Well, I, I don't wanna give everything away, but I, I promise you, I'll be, I'll be looking at it pretty, pretty hard, and, and working with some people to, uh, to see what we can do to rein that in. You know, the, the SGRA out there sold 500 million dol-, but, the, Montgomery County voted to, to, to 500 million dollars worth of bonds, and I don't think they really understood what they were getting...
Right.
...out of those five, it's gonna be a billion dollars before it's done, and the first phase goes to the Woodlands, so, but people...
That ain't fair.
It's not fair at all, you know, and, and my, my contention is that the Woodlands could've fixed their water problems a heck of a lot cheaper than 500 million dollars.
Wow, wee!
So, there's, there's long-term phases that they have, and I'm not just trying to say the SGR is bad, but...
Are we gonna, gonna be getting Fiji water, or so, what is exactly, is that mean?
No, Lake Conroe water.
Okay, I live right by there, and so, wait a minute, what is it gonna go through before it gets to my faucet, before it gets to my mouth?
Oh, they built a massive plant out there, so, they have a massive filtration plant, so, but, it's, it's beautiful, I'm not gonna lie, it, it's a nice, it's a nice thing, but it's, uh, the price was too high, and we should, we should've never got involved in that deal.
So, it was a bad deal? We should've called Donald Trump?
We should've called Trump.
Okay, okay.
Anybody.
Anybody could've negotiated a better deal?
911 would've been good.
Very good, Dwayne, that was good, that's one for Dwayne, okay. Uh, so, so if you can fight that, and you, and, and you're working on it, and you're, you may be struggling, you may need some support from your constituents and all that, how are you gonna be able to communicate that? Besides, anytime you want to, Dwayne, this is invitation, anytime you want to, you've got something you need to say, and you can't vent at the city council, uh, then come here and tell us, and let people know, "This is what's going on, this is what I'm trying to do for you." 'Cause a lot of people...
You bet.
You know, they, they don't, I mean, some people that wanna go eat their peanut butter jelly sandwich and want, listen to the city council meeting, I, maybe, okay, that, that's okay. But, a lot of people don't do that, so...
Sure.
Uh, they just like, "Let me live here, please let me alone, please the property taxes, I don't wanna go, have to go before that board, what's the deal, what, what's going on there?" And, that kinda thing. But if you can, if you can educate people so that they're either not, you know, so disheartened that they have no control over anything, they just have to sit there and take it, you know, that would be great.
Well, I'm gonna hold you to it, if you're telling me I can come back, huh?
Anytime you want to, and then, and we can discuss Democrats, we can be, it'll be fun time on The Cindy Cochrane Show. Is there one issue that people keep bringing up, like a question that you get over and over and over again, and you'd like to put it to rest? What's, what's the question?
Oh, I don't know, I can't really think of something right now that, that people just keep asking over and over, but I can tell you, I'm gonna, I'm a proven leader.
Uh-huh.
Uh, and, and day one, I'll be ready to go to work, and, and conserving our conservative values, and protecting the conservative values of Montgomery County.
Oh, see, that's great. I think day one is always my issue, is like, once we empower you with your position on that city council, what power do you have, day one, that you can start saying, "Okay, uh, this is what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna, I'm gonna contact these people, I'm gonna contact this, we're gonna have a group meeting here, and I'm gonna call a meeting," and tell me what you could do.
Well, I, I think one of the things that I bring to the table is my business acumen that I, that I bring to the table, and you know, I've not always, you know, I, I've had to, I put my boots on just like everybody else...
Right.
You know, left and right, and, and so, what, what I will say is that, uh, I think, I think I have a pretty good way of, of uniting people around a cause, and, you know, just to say no to something's not enough. I say that all the time about our, our, you know, our leaders in Washington, just because you say no to something, doesn't mean that you're sticking to your conservative values, just because you say no. You need to be able to unite people around your cause...
Right, right.
To be able to get, get things done. And I think I'm the kind of guy that can get that done. So.
That's, that's good. I, I believe in you. I think that, uh, you work well with others. Did you always get that on your report card?
No.
Okay. Okay. You know, a lot of people will, will elect somebody because they've said, I'm going in there and I'm going to fight and I'm going to do this and all that. And then they get in there and they try to get along.
Sure.
And then I didn't, I didn't vote for you to get along. I want you to go in there and stand up and fight for that. Yeah.
Yeah. You're right. And, and, and that's, that's, it's exactly what I'm saying is you can stick to your morals and you can stick to your convictions.
Right.
But you need to bring people over to you.
Right, right.
And let them see why they need to get, you know, to, to, to side with you and vote with you, you know, and, and have a long-term strategic plan.
Mm hmm.
I mean, Montgomery County is growing at a rapid rate and so is the city council. I mean, I mean, so is the city of Conroe. I mean, with the annexations and everything we've got going on, uh, some of that, we weren't being good Texans when we did. A friend of mine gave me that line. I'm not going to say that I came up with it by myself, but.
I like it.
But I, I, I'm here to tell you that, that, you know, we, we've got to have a strategic growth plan that preserves our conservative values and works with the people. Now that we're going to have growth and so our tax base is going to grow.
Mm hmm.
So we don't always have to go raise taxes all the time. Actually, we need to be lowering taxes as our, as we grow and giving back more to our community.
Well, it's, uh, do you see, uh, I get the sign. I know. See, I know sign language. And so when Richard does that, at least he's taking that one finger and rolling it around. That means wrap it up for me. We gotta go to a break. We gotta go to a break. But we will be right back with Dwayne Ham because I've got a question for you. Like who's coming here to build and what's, what do we have to see in the future of what may be happening to Conroe?
You bet.
Okay. Can't wait. We'll be right back on the Cindy Cochran Show. Don't go away.
The Cindy Cochran Show, the first daily talk show serving Montgomery County.
Doing business since 1985, Assistance League of Montgomery County is a nonprofit, all volunteer organization where all proceeds stay in Montgomery County. Through our Operation School Bell program, we have provided new clothes to over 50,000 students in our county. Visit our thrift shop at 126 North San Jacinto Street in downtown Conroe or call us at 936-760-1151. Don't forget to like us on Facebook.
In a world where everyone with a smartphone is a photographer, unique images still stand out in local newspapers, magazines and on the internet. Writer and photographer Brad Meyer has gained a reputation for innovation and quality specializing in an editorial approach to portraits and event photography. For information, visit BKMYER.com or call 281-221-4812.
Hello, I'm Bonita DeRosa, Animal Control Officer for the City of Willis. We invite you to tune in to Lone Star Internet Radio every first and third Thursday of the month at 11:00 AM for the Willis Hour. On the first Thursday of the month, the Willis Hour will be covering upcoming events and news about the city. Join in the conversation with your city officials and other leaders in the community. On the third, we will be doing a recap of the last city council meeting. The mission of the City of Willis is to provide high-quality services, accountability and professional commitment to our citizens. We pledge to provide those who live, work and visit our city an effective government that is open and responsive to the needs and values of the community. Again, we invite you to tune in on Lone Star Internet Radio every first and third Thursday of the month at 11:00 for the Willis Hour.
At Jazzy Junk, volunteers reclaim, restore and recycle. Jazzy Junk is a nonprofit resale storefront where you will discover wonderful, unique finds at very affordable prices on furniture, antiques, books, art, home decor and more. When you shop Jazzy Junk, you support New Danville, a community for adults with developmental disabilities. We receive new donations daily, so plan a visit to Jazzy Junk today to find that perfect item or gift. Our motto is here today, gone today. So remember to hurry in and shop often for the best selection. Jazzy Junk is located in the outlets at Conroe on Leageline Road and I-45 North. Call 936-441-4500 or visit our website, jazzyjunk.org. That's J-U-N-Q-U-E for more information and store hours.
The Cindy Cochran Show, the most opinionated talk show on radio.
And we're back on the Cindy Cochran Show. Thank you so much for joining us. We know you have a choice. But if you missed any of this, and the first part of this was Dwayne Ham, uh, who's running for city council of Conroe, Texas. We're learning all kinds of things. Position one at large, at large. Um, you, uh, do not want to miss the first part of it. So, uh, go to our archives that, uh, it'll be there forever. And so the Cindy Cochran Show, uh, Facebook, go there and find out, when you will be able to hear the whole show. We can, uh, plug you into that. So anyway, uh, you will be on YouTube and you'll be there forever. So people will be going like, is he still running for city council? So it says so on the Cindy Cochran Show. Okay, Dwayne. Now my tease was what is coming to the area that's, um, a lot of big companies are moving into different, you know, small towns and all that. And they just bring so much money and so much, uh, activity. So can you give us a hint to the future, what's happening here in Conroe?
Well, we have some huge developments coming. I mean, Johnson Development took the old camp strike out there.
Yeah.
And they're going to have so much, they're going to have residential and commercial. Um, I'm hearing that they're kind of going to have a, uh, market street, kind of like the Woodlands has. So that's going to be really neat.
Oh, some competition for the Woodlands. Okay.
Yeah. Uh, we've got the Hughes Development that's going to be, it, it's up I-45, uh, north.
This is Howard Hughes.
Well, it's his, one of his companies.
It's one of his companies. Okay. Yeah. But you got the HH next to something. That's cool. That's very cool. I love that.
You know, we have our, you know, Conroe has the, the industrial park that's out there off 3083, the tech park that's coming in. They, they own all the acreage out there. There, there's hundreds of acres for that tech park. It's state of the art. We have our airport that's growing leaps and bounds out there. We're, uh, getting a, uh, a customs deal out there at the airport. So, you know, Exxon Mobil and all those guys that fly in from overseas can.
Oh, yeah.
Zip right in and zip right out. So.
Sneak in and sneak out. I know. So, uh, we'll have to just build up the, uh, the entertainment area around here in, in, uh, Conroe. So they'll have, they've got the Crichton and the Owen that they can go to and enjoy, you know, things that they, you know, during their day off.
One other thing, you know, Dean Bass over at Spirit of Texas Bank.
Oh, I know Dean. Yeah.
To your listeners, if they haven't seen that beautiful bank, it is amazing. But he has a great plan or they have a great plan down there. I think they're going to put in an entertainment center down there as well. I think it's going to see 1,200 people.
Yes, they are. That's right.
That is going to be great for the city of Conroe.
Sure. Yeah. Where the flags are and all that, all that area down there. It is going to be amazing. And I thought we had the second coming of the White House when I saw that thing. That amazed me when I went by there. And then the gold statue, my word. It is just.
Done by a local artist, by the way.
Exactly. Right across the street.
Right across the street.
Craig, Craig, what's Craig's last name? I always forget his. Campabella. Yeah. Campa, no. Craig is wonderful. And, and we're so proud that he's right across the street from us.
Is that a mushroom Campabella?
Campa, Campabel. Isn't it Campabel? I'm, I better say it right.
I'm kidding.
He'll come across and see me in the window.
Oh, that's Portabel is a mushroom.
Yeah, that's right. Portabel. Yeah. See, there you go. I'm so glad we're able to bring this awareness to people. So we got a lot of stuff going on.
You bet.
And, uh, I am so glad we're in the, right in the middle and the thick of it. And you will be with the city council. Now, see, those are the kind of things that I want you to come on the Cindy Cochran Show and let us know that are going on. Like you'll get the first, I mean, you're the one that's going to be that front line. You'll, you'll hear it first and the underground stuff that's going on. And if you'll come on and just relay it to us, that'll be great. Because a lot of people won't sit and watch a city council meeting on channel 12, on Sutton Lake. And I, I may suggest this to the mayor. I love the mayor. The ma, I love the mayor, his family and all that. But you might suggest to him because he's, he probably is not used to being a TV star, but, uh, to not chew gum while he's, uh, uh, at city council.
Oh man, I get in trouble for that too. Oh my goodness.
It's just, he's, I love how relaxed he is and he feels very comfortable, you know, like sitting there and all, but, um, but just telling me, you know, he's going to be in the big time now and he needs to, to, to go like, probably shouldn't chew the gum. You know, park the gum and, uh, and it'll be good. And if he'll do it on the air, it'll be funnier. If he'll take it out of his mouth and put it under the table, we'll love that kind of stuff.
That would be awesome.
Yeah. If he could do that, that would be good.
Just have him a stack there after four years of just all my gum.
All my gum. And it would be like historical there. Uh, but anyway, I, I, I think a lot of people don't listen to city council meetings because a lot of times y'all are talking about stuff that, you know.
Well, I'm not there yet. So.
Well, I'm already putting you there. So.
Okay, good.
It's all your, the buzzwords they have and stuff that, uh, they talk about. But I think it'll be interesting if you come and put a face on it for us so that you'll say, look, watch channel 12. This, because we had just had a meeting and this is why don't you wa, watch for and listen for and, and watch out. I, I think that would help bring more viewers to the city council meeting.
Sure.
If you could do that for us. That would be, that would be terrific. Now, the, the one thing I think that people, I feel so safe here. I feel like, like you said, like we're in a bubble, we're in a cocoon and, and we feel very safe. We have Lieutenant Bob Berry from the Conroe Police Department here every Monday. And we talk about the law and talk about things like that. And, and things that happen nationally. How do we, how are we responding or how are we looking and going to school on those things that happen? You know, uh, terrorist problems and things like that and school shootings. And how are we training our officers and staying right up to date and, and all that? And so we're, we're able to, through him, he tells us what's going on and, and, uh, what they may be doing strategy wise for, for different events. But, um, on the city council, do you guys bring up fund or whatever for training and awareness for, you know, for the citizens here in Conroe about security and?
Well, absolutely. The, the city council funds our police department to make sure they have all the necessary tools and.
Right.
To, to do their job. And, uh, and, uh, I'm not sure what they do for the public. Um, you know, what, what, what stages we could do, you know, to, to, to train in the public for that. You know, some of that stuff's going to have to be, uh, kept pretty quiet. So we don't let the bad guys know what our plan is.
What your plan is?
But, uh.
But we know that you're planning and that we know that you're, you're there.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Somebody came to you and stood in front of the city council, because this is another thing I'd like to talk about. It's like.
Sure.
How do you get in front of city council to talk? Do you have to make an appointment? Do you have to?
No, you, you go sign up. Uh, every, every time there's a council meeting, I think you can, you can put your name on a.
The day of or right before it happens? You go in there an hour before or put your name down or?
Well, i, if you're going to get on the agenda, you're going to have to be there, uh, you know, bef, before city council. But if, if you want to speak and address the city council, I believe you just sign up kind of like Commissioner's Court.
Okay.
Uh, you know, if you have a complaint or you want to say something, you know, you want to address the council.
Right.
Uh, just on something random. But, you know, to be on the agenda, I mean, that's, that's planned in, oh, probably a week in advance.
And, and you write what you're going to talk about and all that. So they know, they have a, they're aware of what you're going to ask. So if you walk up and you, and you say, I want to know why we can't fund having an officer in every school in Montgomery County. What would, what would the response be to something like that?
Oh, don't ask me that.
No, I'm not saying you ask, I mean, like if, if they ask and the mayor says, is it usually like, we'll take that up or has anybody thought about that? Or like, you know, are you going to pay for it or, you know?
An officer in every school? Is that what you have?
Yeah. Like one officer in every school that we have someone that has a firearm and that, uh, that might be able to get to a situation faster than trying to get the police and, and all that.
Sure. Well, I mean, that would come up, part of that, most of that comes up in budgeting, first of all. And then, you know, Conroe ISD has their own.
Security?
Security police force. Where, where, you know, Willis has the constables that do that over there. So.
But they're not in the school. They just, they, they're not.
Yes, ma'am.
They're in the school?
Yes, ma'am.
Yay.
They also have patrol cars and we do have officers in the schools. So, and I think they float around. It's, I, I don't know. I don't know this for certain, but I, I don't, I don't think they have one in every single school.
Right.
They have a, they have a, uh, you know, police, just like we have city of Conroe police, they have Conroe ISD police.
Right.
And, and, you know, they train a lot. Those guys train a lot. And I'm sure they're training more with everything that's been going on. So.
Well, see, I wouldn't.
They have drug dogs. They have, I mean.
Do you know what would be great is that if, if I could have a representative or someone from that and, and you'll be the conduit for me once you get on city council. Is that they could come in and explain what, what they are doing.
You bet.
To keep the, the kids safe. That would, that would help parents. It's like when Sandy Hook happened.
Mm hmm.
I remember going up to the school and people, kids, parents were going and bringing all the kids out. I mean, this happened, this happened far away, but it scared them so bad. They were taking their kids out of school, you know, until they were assured. And then the next, the next day, there was an officer standing out there. There was, there was, uh, uh, they were building a protective thing for the person, the poor little lady that's there at the, the front line, you know.
Hey, the greatest love we have is our children.
You are. Exactly. And so, so for that, you know, for that to happen, for us to make people aware, you know, this is, because I feel very safe with the, you know, with the kids there. And, and I know they've practiced lockdown and, and all that.
Sure.
But, uh, I think just knowing what extreme, uh, measures we go to, to make sure the kids are safe. That'll be, that'll be, that'd be good. So you'll, you'll come back. You'll bring me sort of resources and we can talk about that.
I can do that.
Cause see, you know, a lot of people just don't have, they just don't know how to get in touch with or how to find out about things. And if we can bring them here and then, and know that you'll be, uh, you'll be talking to them because that's what, I think people, you know, you're real, you're a real guy. And, uh, and you're very comfortable talking about how you feel about things. And they just, once they meet you, once somebody meets you and shakes your hand and you look in their eye and they say, this is what I'm going to do for you. You're theirs. You know, you got them. That, that's your gotcha to them. But you, you've got them. And, and then they're going to look to you to, you know, to be held accountable, you know, and, and make sure that you do what you say.
You bet.
Cause that's what everybody, you know, just don't, they fear the, they fear the politician and everybody.
Ooh, I know, I know. And, and our politicians do need to be held, held accountable. So, but they need to remember that they work for the people. So, well, when I'm elected to city council, I don't work for the city of Conroe. Let's be clear. I work for this, for the people of, of the city of Conroe.
Right, right.
I don't work for the city of Conroe. I work for the constituents. So.
Well, I think that's what.
That will be my biggest job.
I, I think that's great because that's the attitude that you want the national officials to have. Look, you, you know, and everybody keeps having to remind themselves, wait a minute, you're working for me.
That's right.
And, and when I tell people, you can change, you know, you can change your boss. This is the only country that you can change your boss. If you don't like the boss you're working for, you can go in and vote him out.
You bet.
And that's, that's the whole, and most companies you work for, you can't do that. But this is the, you know, this is the time you can. You go vote and you can change something that's making policies for you. You can do that. That's why I've always said, you know, if Hillary Clinton came before, you know, my direct, board of directors and wanted a job as president of that company. And I find out, you know, I'd have to say, wait a minute, you're being indicted, maybe indicted by FBI and you're trying to apply for a job here? I don't think so. Let's let that play out and see. And then, oh, wait a minute. And then you were in, in charge of keeping safety on this one, this one, uh, building out in Benghazi. And they all got killed because you told them like, I, you know what? And then you lied to the American people about, uh, I don't know if I can trust you to be part of this.
You bet. You bet. Well, you know, outside of that, you know, Hillary Roden Clinton has done so many bad things that it doesn't matter whether she's convicted at this point. And I'm a big proponent of this is America, you're innocent till proven guilty. But that lady is something else.
Well, I, I think that, you know, that's what I'm, I'm saying. I can't believe people that flat out, you've been caught. You've caught and red-handed that you've been caught on this and we see it. We see it. I don't care what everybody else in the government is saying, but we see it. So, uh, listen, guys, don't go away because you know, this is when it gets really fun. All right. We're going to be back with Dwayne Ham, who's running for city council here at position one at large. Do not go away.
The Cindy Cochran Show, even if these walls could talk, they couldn't get a word in edgewise.
The Conroe YMCA's benchmark adaptive programming for kids and adults is Leap of Faith. Leap of Faith is an equine assisted therapy program, serving children and adults with adaptive needs. The riders in our Leap of Faith program are working to address and manage specific aspects of their lives impacted by illness, injury or disability. The Leap of Faith program has experience working with riders who are living with attention deficit or other hyperactivity disorders, hearing impairments, visual impairments, developmental delays or disabilities, autism, Down syndrome, multiple sclerosis, muscular dystrophy, head traumas, brain injuries and paralysis. Our program uses horseback riding to develop self-confidence and self-esteem, to increase upper and lower body strength, assist in respiratory issues and establish a trusting relationship between the rider and their horse. Not only do these activities aid in the physical and mental development of the rider, they also foster self-reliance and independence. For more information regarding our program, to become a rider or to volunteer with a great group of people, please call our welcome center at 936-441-9622. Or visit our website at www.ymcahouston.org/conroe.
Hey, this is Cindy Cochran and now Conroe can boast of another first. The first morning live talk show, 10 to 11 AM, Monday through Friday, right here on Lone Star Internet Radio, coming straight out of the fabulous downtown Conroe, Texas. Be the coolest guy at the water cooler or the most informed break room dweller by listening to the fun side of the news, local, national, infinity and beyond. The Cindy Cochran Show, you ain't heard nothing yet.
In a world where everyone with a smartphone is a photographer, unique images still stand out in local newspapers, magazines and on the internet. Writer and photographer Brad Meyer has gained a reputation for innovation and quality specializing in an editorial approach to portraits and event photography. For information, visit BKMYER.com or call 281-221-4812.
I'm Lieutenant Bob Berry with the Conroe Police Department, reminding you that drinking and driving do not mix. Drinking and driving causes an alcohol-related fatality every hour in the United States. Stay sober and stay alive.
The Cindy Cochran Show, you ain't heard nothing yet.
And we're back. You're listening to Cindy Cochran Show. We have had so much fun. I love talking about this kind of thing, the election, what you should know, uh, what's behind the scenes and all that. So, and, and city council, city council, those guys are the ones that are having to have, um, you know, talk directly to, uh, the city. They should be, they should be talking to citizens and they always allow them to have a referendum where they can come in and talk and ask questions and all that. So we've got here today, Dwayne Ham, who has a, a bus, business background and entrepreneur. He understands the business. He understands working with people and all that. But that, uh, he's going to run for, he's running right now. He just filed for position one at large, uh, city council of, uh, Conroe. And so we're very interested in that, of course, because we're in Conroe. But I think that a lot of things that they have to go through and that they're dealing with are things that everybody, you know, in different cities, small or large or whatever, have to deal with. Is that correct? Do you think it's about the same? They have, have a lot of the similar, uh, problems that they go through on city councils in different, doesn't matter how big you are or small you are?
Oh, I'm sure they have some similarities. You know, we're, we're, we're experiencing, experiencing rapid growth here.
Yes.
And, and you know, we're probably going to be at a hundred thousand probably in five years. So.
Right.
Uh, I don't know, you know, I don't think Navasoda is experiencing the same growth we're, we're experiencing. And I'm just using that as an example, but, uh, so yeah.
Their, uh, their city council meetings may be a little shorter than yours. But then you said you have a good friend on the city council.
Oh, I do. Duke Coon.
Duke Coon. I want that guy on the show. He's, he needs to come on the show and talk about. about what's like.
Well, I have several friends up. I don't wanna just, you know.
Yeah.
I have several friends up there. But Duke Coon's one of my close, personal friends.
Right.
You know.
He's the one that's got you in this race, right?
He did, man. He did. He, he, uh, you know, he said, man, I need some help. And, uh, you know, a lot of things are fixing to change. We're fixing to have a new mayor. So.
That's right. That's right. Well, he can keep, then the one that's here now.
Mayor Webb Melder.
Yeah, he can keep chewing his gum. I'm, I'm just kidding. He can keep chewing his gum. It's, it's gonna be fine. But.
Well, you know.
Well, if, if that, I think it's just interesting, because, uh, we wanna try and bring a lot of attention to the city council. We wanna try and make people watch it on Channel 12.
You bet.
They can watch what's going on right there and, and happening. If you don't wanna go down there and sit on the bench and, and watch it, it'll, this will be a way to do it. And, uh, but we wanna have you come back and put the face on it and say, here's what's going on, here's behind the scenes, you know, not, not your secrets, I understand that.
Sure.
But that, uh, we get to know people a little bit better.
You bet.
Because you don't wanna go, it's like watching NASCAR and you don't know anybody in the race. I don't, I don't watch cars go around in a circle. It doesn't make anything.
Well, I think the citizens, citizens will like me, because you know, I'm a fighter, one. I'm gonna fight for them, the citizens. And, and I'm gonna bring, uh, staunch conservative values. If, if it makes good business sense, then we can do it. You know, we've done some things that I didn't really agree with, with the annexation. And I say, we, I wasn't, I'm not on city council yet. But, you know, we just, that wasn't planned outright. We've done some things as far as our infrastructure goes, when we are annexing, that we don't even do our due diligence. Well, nobody buys a house without having it inspected.
Right, right.
And we, we've done some things like that, that, uh, I, I hope that we're gonna change.
Right.
You know, this forced annexation is probably not the way to go, especially with the growth that we're gonna have, the new growth that we're gonna have. We, we don't have to go.
Well, that's like George Mitchell was scared to death about Houston trying to annex, you know, Woodlands. They, they fought that, fought that, fought that. And so, you know, and that scared, I think a lot of people, like, who's gonna come eat us up? And then we're gonna have to be on their system, and we don't have the control anymore. So the stronger we are, and the stronger our government is here in our, in our city, the better we, the better off we are.
Well, I think the Woodlands saw what, what the city of Houston did to Kingwood.
Yeah, yes, exactly, exactly. And that is starting really scaring, really scaring them. So I, I think it's gonna be interesting, be fun. And we'll, uh, and we'll try and bring, you know, some, uh, some visuals to it and say, this is what's happening, and, and be looking for this and all. And that'll be fun. And, and bringing visuals, uh, on a radio program is difficult. But I think that, uh, we can do it here. We can do it here, Dwayne. And if you, if you wanna tell someone, here's what you don't know about me. I think we, we've heard a lot from you today. But if you say, you don't know this about me. Tell me about your family, and then, uh, where y'all gonna go, what movie you're gonna see this, uh, this weekend? Go ahead.
What movie?
Yeah.
I don't have time to go to the movies anymore. I have to direct TV and see, go down through there and see what we have. Uh, I, I have a passion for, for, for working for the people.
Right.
Uh, I started my first company in college. And, uh, you know, ever since then, I've just, I've, I've, I've developed different companies and done different things. And, and I enjoy different things. You know, this week I may be into this, and the next week I may on, on a part of this, or looking at doing something like that. So.
Right.
I've, 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 uh, I've won and lost. You know, it's just, it's just who I am.